Good evening. Welcome to the Leader of the Opposition Tongue Hall, live from La Jolla Auditorium in St Joseph. We thank you for your support. Now please stand for the National Anthem followed by a prayer. Good evening. Welcome to the Leader of the Opposition Tongue Hall, live from La Jolla Auditorium in St Joseph. We thank you for your support. Now please stand for the National Anthem followed by a prayer. Almighty God, most beneficial and merciful, Creator of the universe and embodiment of divine wisdom and light, we come before you with thanksgiving and praise. May your will be done in our nation as it is in the heavens. Please bless our political leader, party officials, activists and all the people of Trinidad and Tobago. Give us the grace to always see good, be good and do good and the courage to serve the people. Protect us as we stand against injustice and inequity that inspire our endeavors to find the right solutions to the problems that are affecting our fellow citizens. Grant that we may always work together with humility and respect for the greater happiness of all and the honour and glory of our country. Our patients, emergencies, our hospitals. Tonight, Professor Hubert Daisley, Dr Narinderh Rupnerain, Dr Richie Situr, live from the La Jolla Complex in St Joseph. This is the Healthcare Tongue Hall moderated by Kamala Prasad Bissasen.
Welcome all to the Leader of the Opposition Tongue Hall meeting in the constituency of St Joseph and we are the La Jolla Auditorium. My friends, tonight we will focus on healthcare and this is a topic that is affecting all of us and I'd like to thank you all for attending here tonight and I'd like to commend my leader on these very, very successful Tongue Hall meetings. Round of applause. My, my friends, tonight you as citizens of Trinidad and Tobago will have the opportunity to give your views and possible remedies to many of the issues faced by our public healthcare sector. I'd like to commend the Leader of the Opposition for this very incredible initiative. Her mantra has always been to serve the people and she will continue to serve the people when she returns as Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago in 2025. Joining me tonight, we have three very distinguished panelists. My very good friend and mentor, Dr Lakram Bodo. We also have Dr Narinderh Rupnerain as well as Professor Hubert Daisley and we are going to explore four highly relevant topics that are pertinent to the health sector here in Trinidad and Tobago. But before we do that, to my political leader.
Good evening everyone. Now we've had a very exciting day, I don't know about you, but those of us who are in the parliament, we had a very exciting day and I'll tell you a little more of that as we go along for the evening. But I want to welcome my good friend, dear Jack Warner who is here with us. He's joined us as well, let's welcome him here. Robert, other MPs and senators who are here and of course our newly minted candidate for San Fernando West, Dr Dolan, Michael Dolan. And all others, congress, all the men, all citizens who are here tonight. We thank you very much for showing up and we promise you a very interesting evening as we continue. Today I will tell you, you may not know but I'm always aware, a report was laid in the parliament today and you know God is great, I always say, because I didn't know it would be laid today in the parliament and we cannot speak on parliamentary reports until it's laid. And today happened to be the day that we were going to be dealing with the healthcare system in Trinidad and Tobago and the report is about medical care. So we share some of it with you. This report was laid as a joint select committee report and Dr Bodo was a member on it for us, representing us, so there's some very interesting information which I'll share with you in due course. In the meantime, I hand over to Dr Richie and I thank all our comrades here on stage with me to share some of the things, the good things and some of the not so good things in the healthcare system. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much Leader. And I'd like to first read out some of the resumes of our distinguished guests here tonight and some of them are so extensive, I may not be able to read them all but I'll give you some brief highlights. Professor Hubert Daisley is a retired professor and former chairman of the Pathology Unit of the University of the Western East. He's also a retired associate tutor of forensic and legal medicine at the Hugh Wooding Law School. He is a consultant pathologist at the Southwest Regional Health Authority as well as the Tobago Regional Health Authority. Professor Daisley has done over 70,000 autopsies as well as he's a COVID-19 expert as well as he has published over 100 reports in peer review papers. And Professor Daisley is also a fellow of the Royal Society of Medicine. Let's give Professor Daisley a round of applause. Secondly, on our panel here tonight, we have Dr Narinderh Rupnerain and Dr Rupnerain obviously has an MBBS but he also has two postgraduate masters, a masters in public health and a masters in family medicine. He has also obtained diplomas in family medicine as well as emergency medicine. Dr Rupnerain is committed to community service and he has performed many, many health outreach programs in Trinidad and Tobago. He's also a part-time UU lecturer. So let's hear it for Dr Rupnerain.
One moment. Whilst we welcome Dr Rupnerain, I'd also like to let you know he's a child of the UNC. His father Govind Rupnerain is a former member of parliament for Sarajevo. Sorry? That's what I just said. His father is here. I thought that's what I said. Let's welcome the former MP for Sarajevo.
And of course we have Dr Lakram Bodo who is serving his second term as a member of parliament for Faisalabad. Dr Bodo has 40 years of experience as a doctor. He is also an obstetrics specialist for the last 34 years. He practiced both in the public as well as in the private healthcare sectors and he was formerly the chairman of the Southwest Regional Health Authority during the period of 2010 to 2015. Dr Bodo was integral in the development of the Kuva Children's Hospital as well as he was the chair of the Maternity Services Review Committee. Dr Bodo is also a fellow of the Royal College of Obstetrics and Gynecology. So let's hear it for Dr Bodo. So just some very basic wrong rules. Each panelist will be given five minutes, hopefully they will stick to that. So let's start off with our first wrong. Identify the main infrastructural administrative organizational issues affecting the public health sector and the main reasons for these challenges. So firstly, we will begin with Professor Daisley.
Honorable Leader of the Opposition, members of parliament, invited guests, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. I started medicine a long time ago and I remember in 1979 I did my internship at the Portis Pien General Hospital. We had a system, an administrative system then where the hospital was run by a medical chief of staff, the manager of the works department or, and also a matron or nurse. And that system existed for a while before they changed over to the RHAs system. But I must say that that old system was really patient oriented, patient focused. Whatever did occur in the hospital where patients was concerned, the medical chief of staff was the person and the head nurse was, they were the persons who interacted with the patients, with the doctors, they knew their needs and what have you. For some good reason, they moved away from that system which was really and truly speaking patient oriented, patient came first, second, third, fourth. There were no room for any other thing except patient care. And then they moved to the regional health authority system and there is some good in it but there could be a lot of bureaucracy and somewhere along the line, sometimes patient care is missed. And one wonders if it is not time to examine the two systems and see if there could be a merger or if we can revert to the old system. The other thing that I would speak about is the hospitals. You have the San Fernando General Hospital is one of the biggest hospitals in the entire Caribbean. You have Portis Pien General Hospital also is one of the larger hospitals in Trinidad and Tobago. And we do a lot of patient care in both of these hospitals. Well, one of the things that we should be doing is a lot of training. We, we look forward to the University of the Western East and many of our graduates or many of our students would go abroad. I think it's about time that we start to look at these hospitals as training hospitals. In fact, the British system started like that and I see no reason with all these brilliant physicians that are about the place, why it is that we can do our own training here. We have sufficient experts in the field of medicine here. I look at Charagun, I look at Gopi Singh, these are some stalwarts in medicine and they have a lot to offer. I think it's about time that the ministry addressed that problem. And what should happen really is that every position in these hospitals should be training positions, you know. And it is about time that we either embrace the University of the Western East or probably have a different educational body that grants awards, a diploma and what have you. But we have all that we need here. We have all the diseases, we have all the physicians who are experts and what have you and I see no reason why we should continue to track up to the UK and the USA for further training while it could be done right here in our hospitals. Yeah. So basically those are the two things that I wanted to address. One, training in our hospitals. Two, we need to examine this regional health authority with the former system that we had which was more patient centered. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening everyone. Now we've had a very exciting day, I don't know about you, but those of us who are in the parliament, we had a very exciting day and I'll tell you a little more of that as we go along for the evening. But I want to welcome my good friend, dear Jack Warner who is here with us. He's joined us as well, let's welcome him here. Robert, other MPs and senators who are here and of course our newly minted candidate for San Fernando West, Dr Dolan, Michael Dolan. And all others, congress, all the men, all citizens who are here tonight. We thank you very much for showing up and we promise you a very interesting evening as we continue. Today I will tell you, you may not know but I'm always aware, a report was laid in the parliament today and you know God is great, I always say, because I didn't know it would be laid today in the parliament and we cannot speak on parliamentary reports until it's laid. And today happened to be the day that we were going to be dealing with the healthcare system in Trinidad and Tobago and the report is about medical care. So we share some of it with you. This report was laid as a joint select committee report and Dr Bodo was a member on it for us, representing us, so there's some very interesting information which I'll share with you in due course. In the meantime, I hand over to Dr Richie and I thank all our comrades here on stage with me to share some of the things, the good things and some of the not so good things in the healthcare system. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much Leader. And I'd like to first read out some of the resumes of our distinguished guests here tonight and some of them are so extensive, I may not be able to read them all but I'll give you some brief highlights. Professor Hubert Daisley is a retired professor and former chairman of the Pathology Unit of the University of the Western East. He's also a retired associate tutor of forensic and legal medicine at the Hugh Wooding Law School. He is a consultant pathologist at the Southwest Regional Health Authority as well as the Tobago Regional Health Authority. Professor Daisley has done over 70,000 autopsies as well as he's a COVID-19 expert as well as he has published over 100 reports in peer review papers. And Professor Daisley is also a fellow of the Royal Society of Medicine. Let's give Professor Daisley a round of applause. Secondly, on our panel here tonight, we have Dr Narinderh Rupnerain and Dr Rupnerain obviously has an MBBS but he also has two postgraduate masters, a masters in public health and a masters in family medicine. He has also obtained diplomas in family medicine as well as emergency medicine. Dr Rupnerain is committed to community service and he has performed many, many health outreach programs in Trinidad and Tobago. He's also a part-time UU lecturer. So let's hear it for Dr Rupnerain. And we also have Dr Lakram Bodo.
One moment. Whilst we welcome Dr Rupnerain, I'd also like to let you know he's a child of the UNC. His father Govind Rupnerain is a former member of parliament for Sarajevo. Sorry? I just, that's what I just said. His father is here. I thought that's what I said. Let's welcome the former MP for Sarajevo.
And of course we have Dr Lakram Bodo who is serving his second term as a member of parliament for Faisalabad. Dr Bodo has 40 years of experience as a doctor. He is also an obstetrics specialist for the last 34 years. He practiced both in the public as well as in the private healthcare sectors and he was formerly the chairman of the Southwest Regional Health Authority during the period of 2010 to 2015. Dr Bodo was integral in the development of the Kuva Children's Hospital as well as he was the chair of the Maternity Services Review Committee. Dr Bodo is also a fellow of the Royal College of Obstetrics and Gynecology. So let's hear it for Dr Bodo. So just some very basic wrong rules. Each panelist will be given five minutes, hopefully they will stick to that. So let's start off with our first wrong. Identify the main infrastructural administrative organizational issues affecting the public health sector and the main reasons for these challenges. So firstly, we will begin with Professor Daisley.
Hi. Honorable Leader of the Opposition, members of parliament, invited guests, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. I started medicine a long time ago and I remember in 1979 I did my internship at the Portis Pien General Hospital. We had a system, an administrative system then where the hospital was run by a medical chief of staff, the manager of the works department or, and also a matron or nurse. And that system existed for a while before they changed over to the RHAs system. But I must say that that old system was really patient oriented, patient focused. Whatever did occur in the hospital where patients was concerned, the medical chief of staff was the person and the head nurse was, they were the persons who interacted with the patients, with the doctors, they know their needs and what have you. For some good reason, they moved away from that system which was really and truly speaking patient oriented, patient came first, second, third, fourth. There were no room for any other thing except patient care. And then they moved to the regional health authority system and there is some good in it but there could be a lot of bureaucracy and somewhere along the line, sometimes patient care is missed. And one wonders if it is not time to examine the two systems and see if there could be a merger or if we can revert to the old system. The other thing that I would speak about is the hospitals. You have the San Fernando General Hospital is one of the biggest hospitals in the entire Caribbean. You have Portis Pien General Hospital also is one of the larger hospitals in Trinidad and Tobago. And we do a lot of patient care in both of these hospitals. Well, one of the things that we should be doing is a lot of training. We, we look forward to the University of the Western East and many of our graduates or many of our students would go abroad. I think it's about time that we start to look at these hospitals as training hospitals. In fact, the British system started like that and I see no reason with all these brilliant physicians that are about the place, why it is that we can do our own training here. We have sufficient experts in the field of medicine here. I look at Charagun, I look at Gopi Singh, these are some stalwarts in medicine and they have a lot to offer. And I think it's about time that the ministry addressed that problem. And what should happen really is that every position in these hospitals should be training positions, you know. And it is about time that we either embrace the University of the Western East or probably have a different educational body that grants awards, a diploma and what have you. But we have all that we need here. We have all the diseases, we have all the physicians who are experts and what have you and I see no reason why we should continue to track up to the UK and the USA for further training while it could be done right here in our hospitals. Yeah. So basically those are the two things that I wanted to address. One, training in our hospitals. Two, we need to examine this regional health authority with the former system that we had which was more patient centered. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. The Honorable Leader of the Opposition, Mrs Kamala Prasad Bissasen, Senior Counselor. Mr Chairman, fellow panelists, the audience gathered here and many listening and viewing on the various medias. It is my distinct honor to join in on tonight's topic, health. Firstly, when identifying infrastructural issues, we must understand that there are over 100 public health institutions throughout the length and breadth of Trinidad and Tobago, from general hospitals to outreach centers, each with their own range of issues. A main challenge that must, that most face is the aging or inadequate infrastructure. Several institutions cannot operate at their maximum efficiency due to this problem. This directly impacts every citizen of TNT as we all know the burden of trying to find a bed for your loved one or even for ourselves or even to access care if we ever have to go to a public institution. A solution, as simple as it may be, the implementation of a national preventative maintenance program that must have the mandate to deal with the aging facilities in a timely ordered fashion with the relevant stakeholders that are not only from the various RHAs but also from an external source because it must not only be self-monitoring self. When it comes to organization and administrative issues, one of the major challenges... one of the major challenges, as Dr Daisley would have said, there seems to be a disconnect between the RHAs and the ministry. The Ministry of Health has the responsibility for policy and planning, basically to create the direction and the priorities for the nation as well as setting certain standards, whilst the RHAs have responsibility for the varied service delivery. One can see many examples of this disconnect easily as with the recent Dengue situation. And even a few years back, do you all remember Covid, the Covid pandemic? Which impacted every single citizen of Trinidad and Tobago. The powers that be gave a rosy picture of what life should be. But the regular person on the ground faced a stark contrast to this. It is as if they were blind to the everyday suffering of the nation's citizens. Many of us can remember the debacle of the Everyday News Conference that gave little consolation to the citizenry. Their fears and expectations were not adequately addressed. Just to give a further example, the home monitoring of individuals with Covid was ideally supposed to be daily. But many could attest that this was certainly not the case. The MOH and RHAs have to build better communication strategies. And how can we achieve this? By going after low-hanging fruit, increasing staffing in healthcare. And by this, I don't necessarily mean more managers, but frontline nurses, doctors and paraclinical staff that touch lives of patients every day. Because as we all know, health workers are often grossly overworked in the public health system. Increase the hours of available services at the health centres, something which existed during the 2010 to 2015 era and was subsequently significantly curtailed. We use the same primary care infrastructure but increase access. And this would help with transport constraints as well. And this would mean many individuals who cannot travel long distances for care can access care. A seemingly simple solution with meaningful and tangible benefits to many. The authorities need to find the right balance of individuals that are willing to take control of the health needs of the population with respect to the board and managerial personnel. Thank you.
I advise that I can contribute from this position. I just want to, of course, recognise and congratulate the Leader of the Opposition for hosting a town hall meeting on the topic of health, which is very relevant. We are all stakeholders when it comes to healthcare. And of course, we've had many challenges over the last nine years. I want to recognise my fellow panelists, one, a junior colleague of mine, Dr Rupnerain, and the other Professor Daisley, a senior colleague of mine who would have taught me in medical school. So we're talking about the issue of infrastructure. And you know, in our healthcare system, if we are to speak about infrastructure, between the period 2010 to 2015, the People's Partnership Government under then-Prime Minister Kamala Pasar Bissasa would have laid a significant groundwork of infrastructure in the health sector. This would have started with the construction or the completion of this Cabra Hospital in 2011 in Tobago. Many of us forget that. And then the completion and opening of the San Fernando Teaching Hospital in January of 2014. It's very easy to forget that, but I'll tell you a little story. That was a shell when the Honourable Leader of the Opposition became Prime Minister. And she, then-Prime Minister, made a visit to that shell, which was a marked to be an administrative building, and took a very bold decision to convert that into a hospital. And that two hundred and thirty-bed hospital now serves the population of San Fernando. One of the issues that was mentioned is the lack of maintenance. And this is unfortunate, Leader, to know and from reports. And if you drive past the hospital, you can see now visibly where panels have fallen off the building. And therefore, that is one of the issues in the health sector in terms of the maintenance of the existing infrastructure. And of course, the other major issue and the other major, you know, contribution with the health sector would be the Kuva Children's Hospital, which was opened on August fourteenth, twenty fifteen. This must never be forgotten. Dr Anand Chattergunna is here. He was the Medical Director of the San Fernando General Hospital. And he can attest that a plan for operating that hospital was in place and it was supposed to be fully operationalised within a few months of its opening. But of course, we know what happened when the government changed hands. So the problem of infrastructure, that is not an issue. The issue here is maintenance. The issue here is how do we utilise the infrastructure that we have? Because there is significant infrastructure. Nariya mentioned a hundred institutions, but we have so many hospitals. We have the new hospitals now, Arima Point fourteen, which started under the leadership of Kamala Pasar Bissasa. But you know, these hospitals have been completed since 2020 and yet for the last four years, they are yet to be fully operationalised for various reasons. For example, the ICU in the Point fourteen hospital is yet to be open, Tim. We understand that patients are still being redirected from the Arima Hospital to the Eric Williams Medical Sciences Complex. A very, very unfortunate situation. So those are some of the issues. And the issue comes back again to management, which my colleagues would have mentioned. So those are the hospitals, the hundred and three health centres. Remember that forty, closer fifty of those health centres were refurbished completely, painted over, completely structural refurbishment under your government leader, you might have forgotten that. And therefore, it is not an issue of infrastructure. It's an issue of administration and process. And I want to endorse the view expressed this evening by Professor Daisley that the RHA model needs to be revisited in a very serious way. Now, the RHA model has been some thirty years now, since nineteen ninety-four, when the RHA Act came into being. But really and truly, the model is not working as it's supposed to be. And one of the big issues is the issue of management. Now, Nariya mentioned, Dr Rupnerain mentioned that the Ministry of Health is responsible for policy and the RHAs for delivery of the services. And that is where it has fallen down. You have a board, I mean, as a former chairman of South West RHA, one of the biggest RHAs in the country. I am telling you that if you don't have proper leadership at that level, then nothing happens. And so the issue is management. And you know, everything is politics. You know, we want to say health is not politics, but who appoints these chairmen? And then who is responsible for appointing the management and so on? So the issue here is a major issue. Leader, I just want to suggest that maybe the time has come to reexamine that model in terms of making it a model that will be more beneficial and that can work, you know, and provide the proper oversight. We spent some sixty, we would have spent some sixty billion dollars in the last nine years. And from the numerous complaints that we are seeing from the public, it means that the system is not working and it needs to be fixed. So I will leave it at that point. I also endorse the training. Just to mention that, of course, when you build the Kuva Children's Hospital, you had a vision for that in terms of training. And I will just leave it there, Leader. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. If I may just intervene for a moment. When you put us back in government, we'll open the Kuva Children's Hospital. And with the RHAs, both Professor and yourself mentioned the dysfunctional way in which RHAs and the Ministry of Health is working. You know, that happens when you take a man from NCC and you put him as in charge of the North Central Health Authority. That happens. But I do agree with Professor Daisley, Dr Bodo, we need to reexamine that model. Anand was with us when we were doing the Anand and Chattergunna when we were doing that Kuva Hospital because we worked out of San Fernando together with Dr Bodo. So look, we will have to open that hospital. And not only is it for training, it was also a way to earn foreign exchange. So the entire Caribbean could come here instead of having to go to the UK or go to the US or go off to India or China or wherever. And you know what else is supposed to? It would have created two thousand new jobs, two thousand new jobs at every level. So I give you that undertaking. Should we have the opportunity, we'll fully operationalise that. And I trust that all equipment has not disappeared by now because it was fully stocked with world-class equipment. Thank you, Dr Rishu.
Thank you, Leader. And Leader, just to add to some of the points that were made here, I'd like to remind you all that cost overruns with regards to infrastructure projects under this PNM administration have been over one billion dollars. The Arima Hospital is over budgeted by four hundred and fifty million dollars. The Point fourteen hospital is over budgeted by over two hundred million dollars. The Sandy Grani Hospital is over budgeted by one point, sorry, over budgeted by two hundred and fifty million dollars. And the Portis Pien Central Block is over budgeted by one hundred and sixty-seven million dollars. And that adds up to over one billion dollars in cost overruns, Leader. So it's the airport overruns are just a drop in the bucket compared to what has happened on the health. And and Leader, just building on what Dr Rupnerain said, we actually have a report in Parliament, a special report of the Auditor General of the Republic of Trinidad and Tobago. And it was named contributing towards a strong and resilient public healthcare system. And this report was done under the authority of the World Health Organisation, the Ministry of Planning and the Ministry of Health. And what the report concluded, that a more resilient healthcare system in Trinidad and Tobago going forward would be achieved when Trinidad and Tobago knew and existing health facilities were adequately staffed and equipped for future health shocks. The report went on to say that roughly thirty-seven point six percent of all healthcare positions in Trinidad and Tobago are currently vacant. So that is why we have such poor delivery of healthcare here in Trinidad and Tobago. And the PNM government knows this. That was a report that was filed last year in the Parliament of Trinidad and Tobago. So moving on to topic number two, and let's give a round of applause for the first round, please. Moving on to topic number two, confronting mental health and wellbeing, the prevalence of addiction and depression in our society post-Covid nineteen and the lack of proper diagnosis, access to mental health treatment and medication for wellness and rehabilitation. And again, we will start Professor Daisley, we will move to Dr Rupnerain, Dr Bodo, and then back to the political leader. Thank you very much.
Covid. Covid was a disaster. In all my years of practice and my experience with and confrontation with other epidemics, this was really a disaster in many, many ways. I've never seen so many people die. I never, you know, I, you know, we at San Fernando General Hospital were overwhelmed with bodies. We had to dole them out to the neighbouring funeral homes for keep. And yet still, in the height of this disaster and the mourning and weeping that took place among families, I couldn't understand why cremations were not allowed early on. There is no virus that could withstand the heat of a thousand degrees Fahrenheit or centigrade. That in itself was very traumatic to relatives, not being able to practise their funeral rites. It was a disaster. Nonetheless, there was some wisdom in the end and cremation were allowed. With the Covid itself, the survivors, some of the survivors do have a residue of the disease that is called lung Covid, L O N G Covid. And that seems to affect not only the lungs but the heart and even the brain. And these people do suffer. And many of them suffer from depression as a result of this post-Covid syndrome. Now, I could continue on to talk about Covid. But let me get on to this thing about drug addiction. You know, in some of our society, that is in the nation of Trinidad and Tobago, during the early morning, if you get up during early and you travel around, there is a gang of, in almost every one of those communities, of young adults. All they do is weed-walking. And they would weed-walk from five to six or four to five and then they spend the rest of the day idle. And what in fact you are creating here is the bed and nest for idleness. And as a result of that, you would look at the youths, I'm talking about youths in their twenties and their thirties, very early in the morning, smoking marijuana, drinking alcohol for the rest of the day until the following day. So we are in fact creating this drug addiction among our youths by not having them gainfully employed. I mean, you're in your twenties and all that there is to offer you is to weed-walk, somebody has to do it. But then this continues on. And then we spoke about crime and violence. These are, this situation then leads to crime and violence. You know, there is nothing else for the youth to do. So we have to be very careful when we talk about drug addiction, that we ourselves, you know, as leaders are not contributing towards this. And this seems to be one of the pattern that is taking over some of our communities. These are, this is something that is real and something that has to be addressed. These chaps should be in, well, if not in school, they should be learning a trade. They should be doing something more constructive to their lives, you know? So I hope that the Leader of the Opposition understands that and I know she's going to do something about it in time to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Worldwide, mental health has been placed on the front burner. According to the WHO, Covid nineteen triggered an alarming twenty-five percent increase in the prevalence of anxiety and depression. Leading the WHO Director General, Dr Tedros, to say, "This is a wake-up call to all countries to pay more attention to mental health and to do a better job of supporting their population's mental health." Our mental health in TNT suffered particularly as there was a prolonged and extensive lockdown. And this exacerbated one's sense of isolation. and this exacerbated one's sense of isolation, loneliness, suffering, and grief, especially after the deaths of our loved ones, not to mention the undue hardships that many small businesses were forced to endure. I remember that we even locked out our own citizens from our country and forced them to fend for themselves in foreign lands with scant courtesy. I remember legislation that was so oppressive that even family members in the same car had to wear a mask. The Global Burden of Disease Study showed that the pandemic affected our youth population significantly in terms of mental health. It is no wonder that we are seeing the worrying signs of bullying and school violence that plague many of our educational institutions. There were disruptions across the board when it came to overall health services, but the impacts on mental health were particularly problematic, as a large part of management includes social support and counseling and not just medicines. In TNT, mental health issues are often received with a negative stigma. And whilst the situation is slowly improving, there is a large gap, and it comes, there is a large gap when it comes to providing a good quality of care. Alcohol and smoking usage as well as addiction rose during the pandemic. Mental health issues, including addiction, should be a relevant part of the school curriculum to increase not only the recognition of the problem, but more importantly, to help with the management of the various disorders and improve the social impacts that are vital for the treatments to succeed. School programs that target at-risk individuals and render early intervention to this adolescent age group can play a major role in decreasing the addiction to drugs, especially alcohol and smoking. Fostering self-esteem and raising the awareness of negative behaviors and practices can enhance how persons interact with each other and increase empathy, self-introspection, and insight, which go a long way in combating anxiety, bullying, and suicidal ideation in our youths. The mental health services needs a good boost, and it was good to see that the United National Congress recognized this often neglected aspect of health within national health education, promotion, and need for integration with respect to mental health as part of their national health services plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mental health is no doubt the elephant in the room. The Simangal Report that reported and did the investigation on COVID-19 mentions something called an NCD debt, D E B T, meaning that when the COVID-19 was finished, there was a backlog, tremendous backlog of patients with NCDs. What that report did not identify, and wasn't expected to identify because it was not the mandate of that investigation, is the debt that this has left this society in terms of mental health. Both my colleagues here would have mentioned the tremendous suffering and pain that citizens would have undergone. And I think as a society, we are yet to confront and deal with that. So one of the first things I would want to suggest is that some sort of study, Leader, needs to be done in terms of looking, you know, at the burden of mental disease that has arisen following the COVID-19 pandemic. But what was the situation before? Because you would have had underlying mental health issues. What are we dealing with? What's the extent of the problem that we are dealing with? Because sometimes it's very difficult to diagnose. Well, PAHO, WHO, Country Profile 2020, looked at the population in terms of age, and this was very interesting. Under five, the children, the main burden is epilepsy and autism, something that we need to address in a more definitive way. Between five and 15-year-olds, 15 years, the burden becomes what you call conduct disorders, anxiety disorders, and headaches. Around 20 years, as you enter, you know, young adulthood, anxiety, depression, self-harm, headaches, substance abuse, which was mentioned, and then you have a small percentage of the CVM mental disorders such as schizophrenia and bipolar disorders. As we get older, the elderly tend to suffer mostly from what we call neurocognitive disorders like Alzheimer's and dementia. So that's the extent of the problem. There is no study that tells us exactly, you know, the numbers and so on. So that is, this is where we are lacking the data. So what is our situation? It's also interesting, they looked at men and women who tend to manifest mental illness in different ways and so on. But what is the situation with our mental health workforce? And this is where we have to look at the resources that we are going to provide. The figures I have, which would be again 2020 figures from WHO, looking at Trinidad and Tobago as a country, said that we have just over 830 mental health professionals in this country. Now, to me, that is definitely a low number. We definitely need to increase those numbers. This was broken down, psychiatrists about 31, mental health nurses 424, psychologists, interestingly, 14. Now, we're probably, we're probably talking about in the public sector, but 14 psychologists to serve a population of 1.4 million is certainly not adequate. Social workers, 40 social workers, significant, significantly low. And other specialized mental health workers, 307. This will include those workers who are trained to rehabilitate in terms of occupational therapy and so on. So I think the point here is that we have a big challenge ahead in terms of how we treat with mental health. In addition to that, the trend now is to move away from institutionalization and move more towards treating mental health in the community. This has been promised for a long time, but is yet, you know, to reach some sort of reality in terms of community mental health. So that is something that we would need to push when you get back in there, Leader. So I'm speaking about the devolution of the psychiatric care to the community. The Mental Health Act is 1975, it's old, it needs review. The situation has changed now in terms of how society operates, and there are some amendments that need to be made, we need to review that in terms of how we treat with mental health. It's been bandied about, there is a national mental health plan, a 10-year plan, but that is yet to, you know, to be in the public domain. Nobody really knows what this means, and this has been bandied about by this present government, so we need to look at that. So I want to say that, you know, that a full investigation is needed. We have recently seen the issue of bullying in schools. That could very well be related to a mental health issue. That could be the, mental health issues might be the underlying issues with that in terms of part of the problem. So I want to say that, you know, Leader, as the incoming Prime Minister, you have a great challenge in terms of how we're going to treat with mental health in this country. Thank you.
One of the issues Professor Daisley brought up was the fact that COVID-19 was a disaster, but it was actually more than a disaster. We in Trinidad and Tobago had one of the highest debt rates per 100,000 persons in the world. We were in fact, we actually ranked almost last in the world, Leader. According to John Hopkins University, we have recorded over 300 deaths per 100,000 persons in Trinidad and Tobago, and we are the 173rd worst-performing country out of 195 countries. So we are ranked 22 from the bottom of the list. And additionally, Leader, we have the highest debt rate in CARICOM. So when the PNM had said we were number one in the world, that was very, very, very far from the truth, and we have the statistics to prove it right now. Secondly, with regards to what Professor Daisley said as well, with regards to lung COVID, we need the ability of health professionals to be able to diagnose this condition. I see this a lot, and the ability, many patients here probably have lung COVID, and they are undiagnosed, they are untreated. And what we have seen in many North American countries, meaning the United States, Canada, and even in Europe, the Scandinavian countries, and the UK, they have added lung COVID to their disability grants, and that is something that we have not done here in Trinidad and Tobago. So we, in many cases, assume disability is physical, but it can also be mental as well, Leader. So that is something that we would have to look at to add persons to the disability grant with mental issues. Dr. Rupnerain also spoke, as well as Dr. Bodo, of the fact of lives versus livelihoods which happened during COVID-19, and thousands and thousands of businesses shut down, and this added, of course, to our mental health issues in Trinidad and Tobago. But what some of you may not know is in 2020, when COVID-19 was hitting us the hardest, the government of Trinidad and Tobago accessed roughly $10 billion in funding from both domestic and international banks. On the domestic market, they accessed $1 billion from the Heritage and Stabilization Fund, they accessed US $900 million from the World Bank, US $20 million, from the Inter-American Development Bank, US $130 million, from the Developmental Bank of Latin America, $150 million, US, Leader, and from the external capital market, US $150 million. And many of these funds are unaccounted for. So in addition to a clinical audit of COVID-19 deaths, because many persons died who did not have to die, and they deserve the dignity of our investigation into what happened during COVID. Thank you. We also need to do a financial audit, Leader, into how monies were spent during COVID-19, because that was a feeding frenzy, and that is something that we definitely have to look at when you return as Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago.
Thank you very much. Not only did we have more deaths than most parts of the world, not did we only access over $10 billion, as you say, we also had one of the longest lockdowns in the world, the longest lockdown in the world. We also had, whilst the lockdown was taking place, we also had the longest lockdown of our schools taking place. So all these issues are contributing to the disaster that we've said the COVID was, but I think the greatest disaster was the then and present government of Trinidad and Tobago. That was the answer. And tonight, we commit, we commit that we will launch a commission of inquiry into the handling of the COVID-19 in Trinidad and Tobago. I thank you.
Thank you, Leader, and let's give a round of applause for everyone on the second round. So topic number three would be non-communical diseases and physical ailments in our population, and our inability to effectively address proper diagnosis, treatment, and backlog, blacklogs, the need for proper pediatric treatment for major illnesses, and for surgeries, providing proper facilities, personnel, and oversight. And again, we will begin with Professor Daisley.
See, everybody is sitting, so probably I could sit. But the two communicable diseases that we have here that is killing Trinadians and Tobigonians, they are diabetes and hypertension. And there should be more public health awareness about these two diseases. I looked at 2003 and 2004, and these were deaths that were autopsied. In 2003, there were 400 and something deaths, and of that 400 and something deaths, 33% were either, well, 33% were diabetic and hypertensive, 33%. In 2024, and we are not finished 2024 as yet, 36% of 530-something deaths, diabetes and hypertension. So these two diseases are contributing to the mortality and morbidity of Trinadians. He spoke about the high incidence of death that we experienced during the COVID, and COVID, in fact, were targeting these two. So in addition from their natural deaths that probably I'll talk about, you had additional COVID targeting these. So it is not surprising that we had so many deaths in Trinidad and Tobago because of the large percentage of people who suffer from these two diseases. Diabetes, as you know, is really a disease in which you have glucose floating above the place and cannot get in into the cells. Glucose, in fact, is the fuel that all cells need to provide the energy for cell action. And in diabetes, what happened for some reason or the other, insulin, which is manufactured in the pancreas, is not, which is responsible for pushing the glucose into the cell, is not doing so for one reason or the other. In the type 1 diabetes, you find that the, which tends to occur in juvenile, they, for one reason or the other, is not producing insulin. And in the type 2, they are producing insulin, but the insulin is not effective. So what really happens is that you tend to have a lot of glucose floating above the place and cannot get into the cells. And as one of my professors used to say, the cells are being starved in the presence of plenty. And as a result of this high glucose that circulates in the blood, you end up being thirsty, you know, wanting to drink a lot of fluid, you eat a lot, and you pass urine a lot. These are the symptoms that you're going to get when somebody has this diabetes. The thing about it is that this glucose that is circulating there begin to do a lot of mischief, and metabolism takes place wherein with this glucose starts to produce some abnormal lipid that is deposited in the vessels and occludes the vessel. And this occlusion takes place throughout the body. And so you'll find that all the major organs are going to be affected. In the heart, for instance, the vessels that supply the heart muscles, what we call the coronary arteries, they become blocked up, and you have chest pain, what we call angina, or sometimes, in most instances, you get a heart attack, what you call a myocardial infarction. Or the heart muscle is not getting sufficient blood flow, and the heart just fails, so you go into heart failure. There are other things that happen. The kidney, for instance, suffers the same fate with the narrowing of the artery, the renal artery. You find then that ultimately, you go into renal failure. And the brain also, where the cerebral artery becomes blocked up, and you get stroke, as it is. But this disease contribute a lot of burden to the public health system. Stenting in the coronary artery, bypass in the heart. You have the legs, for instance, the diabetic foot, diabetic ulcer, gangrene, toes, amputation, wanting prosthesis. wanting prosthesis. And we are not really able to, you know, get a hold of this thing. And the better thing to do is to prevent this. And to prevent this is to, this is basically a lifestyle disease, is to eat properly, exercise. And if you do have the thing, stick with your medication. If you don't do that sort of thing, you're going to end up having one or the other. Hypertension, on the other hand, is also another disease, as I said, that affects the vessels. It is high blood pressure, as we see. And that, again, contributes a lot to the morbidity and mortality in our community. So both these diseases, you know, needs greater public health awareness. And I think that we should start in the schools, the elementary school, to teach about proper eating habits, diet and exercise and that sort of thing. If we are to stave off this epidemic that is hitting Trinidad and Tobago of diabetes and hypertension.
Okay, thank you. On the topic of non-communical diseases, for short, NCDs, I always remember the student's companion from my primary school days. I had an older, orange one and then a newer, green one. And it taught me that an ounce of prevention was worth a pound of cure. That perhaps is the major crux when it comes to dealing with NCDs. Simply recognize the major contributors and deal with the issues. We have to understand that obesity is the biggest driver of NCDs. We have to tackle diet, nutrition and making the right food choices, as Dr. Daisley would have mentioned, when it comes to each person's individual health requirements. The public health authorities have to standardize testing and make early detection a reality by promoting the understanding that several of these NCDs may exist without severe signs and symptoms and to understand the basic medical parameters and promote a wellness culture of exercise and healthy living to improve our nation's health status. Thus, a comprehensive national plan with education and annual early screening must be emphasized as part of our wellness culture. Our youths, especially those in Form 4 to Form 6, can be utilized as special ambassadors to carry forth discommunication as they are at all levels of society and would help to integrate any such wellness program successfully and be essential home monitors. If we train and equip them with the relevant tools, it would be more cost-effective than just giving out BP monitors and glucometer machines. Teaching a basic understanding of BMI or Body Mass Index and of more significance, waist-to-height ratios can help targets to be assessed with relative ease. Whilst we are on the topic of youth, for a country of our stature, it is sad to note there is no single leading public institution that prioritizes children. If we are to maintain the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, especially 3.2, concerning newborn and child mortality, then we have to improve. One important measure would be for a dedicated children's facility that would not only serve as a primary place for treatment, but would serve as a training ground for healthcare staff, as Dr. Bodo would have mentioned and the leader of the opposition would have mentioned, for healthcare staff specifically when it comes to this vulnerable age group, as was the UNC government's intention in the past. There's a saying, "Those who forget history are condemned to repeat it." We should all be acutely aware and not forget the issue we had earlier this year with many neonatal deaths. I am certain that this issue was not handled well by the public authorities and due to this, the public was left with a sour taste in our mouths. A specialist children's hospital could have alleviated this and led to proper oversight, neonatal standards with required monitoring and evaluation and, more specifically, with properly trained personnel. Lastly, I would like to commend the leader of the opposition, Mrs. Passard-Bessar, for her role in the Children's Life Fund, which has helped many pediatric patients with their management when their family's resources were unable to support their need. I believe that this initiative has had a lasting impact on many lives, both the children and their families. And every effort at its expansion would help to protect our vulnerable children. Thank you.
So we have to understand what we are talking about here. A recent IADB survey revealed that the economic cost of NCDs to Trinidad and Tobago was some $8.7 billion. Economic costs, this includes the amount we spend on healthcare together with the loss of earnings, the loss of income. All of that has to be included. We talked about heart disease, we talked about amputations and so on, we talked about disability. So it's a big burden, that's some 5% of our GDP that is. Yes, per year, annually, 8.7 billion annually, so it's a big cost. A lot has been said about the cause of diabetes and the prevention by my colleague who has practices in the primary care. But I just want to say that it is also important that while we confront, you know, the issue of preventing the NCD burden, we have to treat the disease as well. So we have to fix the plane while it's flying. So I'll just give you an example of what I consider to be very an atrocity. If you are a patient in San Fernando in the south and you get chest pain, which could be a heart attack, and you go to the main hospital in San Fernando right now, which is the San Fernando General Hospital with chest pain, you don't get the ideal care, you don't get standard care. The standard of care is that if you are suspected of having a heart attack, then you should have something called an angiogram, which is a test to check whether you have blood vessels in your heart. And the standard of care in all developed countries is that if that is the case, you get your angiogram in the hospital and then you go to the cath lab and you get your stent done. And the standard for that is 90 minutes, it's called 90 minutes door to stent time. So it means from the time you enter the emergency door to the time you get your stent, it should be 90 minutes, that is the standard in the first world countries. What happens here in Trinidad? Those patients have to go outside. They have to pay $10,000 to get an angiogram in the private sector. And then they have to be put on a waiting list to get their stenting done, to get their bypass surgery done. And of course, unfortunately, many patients lose their lives while they're waiting. So that is something that needs to be done. A cath lab at the San Fernando General Hospital has been promised to this country since 2015. Every year in the parliament, we hear different excuses to why it cannot be done. But a car park was built for some $40 million, that's one cath lab. So the point about it is that we're not looking after people. The other issue here with regards to hypertension is the issue of stroke. The facilities for stroke rehabilitation are very limited in this country. And, Leader, I just want to suggest that we pay attention again when you get back in to what, in terms of maybe perhaps a stroke rehabilitation center, something of that nature. And of course, the issue, the issue of cancer care, Tim is here, Dr. Gopiseng is here, he deals a lot with gynecological cancers and so on. That issue is really under treated. Leader, you may not remember, but in 2012, under your leadership, for the first time, a treatment unit was implemented at the San Fernando Hospital. What that would have done is prevented loud patients who had to travel to St. James from the deep south and so on to get their chemotherapy at San Fernando. Luckily, that facility is still there, but of course, a lot more needs to be done in that regard. I just want to touch briefly on the issue of what happened in the NICU. We all remember waking up to those headlines, horrible headlines, of some eight or nine babies dying within a period of four days at the Port of Spain NICU, Port of Spain General Hospital. And then, of course, we had this report from Pahu, I have a copy here in my hand. And it is very frightening, the revelations in this report in terms of what was lacking care at the neonatal intensive care unit. You know, the Minister of Health wanted to question, he asked for this report, but he wanted to question the findings. I can't go into the full report, but you know, basic things. Well, he's not a doctor, Leader, I said. You know, basic things that there are no policies, no procedures for high-level disinfection for equipment. So this was a problem. Limited hands, free alcohol-based rub dispensers. You know, everybody knows, you don't have to be a doctor to know, you have to keep your hands clean. So if the nurses and doctors didn't have those available, then that was a problem. And of course, there are many other issues, breaches in personal protective equipment protocols and so on. You know, and I trust as we are speaking here that all of these recommendations, very worthwhile recommendations, have been implemented. But I just want to close on the point again and come back to the Kuva Hospital, Leader. Because in that hospital, and Dr. Chattergal is here, and he will attest to that, because in the user brief of that hospital, we provided and we created sufficient space, equipment and so on to provide a pediatric intensive care unit and also the facilities were there for neonatal intensive care unit. So had that facility been open, you know, it is quite possible that some of those lives would have been saved. So there's a lot that needs to be done. I will just again remind you, Leader, that you took the lead and this current Minister of Health likes to take credit for work that you did and you started, Leader. And this is an investigation into the issue of maternal maternity. Again, I have a report here which was produced under the direction of the then Prime Minister that spoke to many improvements in maternity care and neonatal care. So I will leave it at that and hand back to you. Thank you.
And Dr. Bodo spoke about the San Fernando car park that was built during the tenure of this government and no cath lab in San Fernando, but even more atrocious than that, we have the Ministry of Health administrative building around the Queen's Park savanna, which was built for $280 million, but the government of Trinidad and Tobago will pay $480 million over the next 15 years. And we still have no cath lab in San Fernando. But, so there's an investigation into that as well. But, Leader, this government has failed badly in cancer. And in March of 2024 this year, we had the Trinidad Express headline, "Patients Pay Privately or Die", and this was from a joint select committee on social services and public administration. And what we found out there were there were shortages of breast and prostate cancer drugs, the number one male and number one cancers in Trinidad and Tobago. And then coming into October of 2024, we had cancer patients waiting in vain for chemotherapy. Please fix the chemo machine, patients not getting chemo on a timely basis. So, Leader, you will speak to them about what you intend to do in your new term on the cancer. We also have issues with renal failure. And what we have seen in the last five years, this government has basically given out a lot of the renal treatment, the dialysis treatment of patients throughout this country. So what started under the External Patient Assistance Program in 2016 for $15 million has now ballooned to, in fiscal 2024, to $150 million for 1,173 patients. So they are basically sending out all the renal dialysis cases to private clinics. And in the last four years, $0.4 billion of state resources have been used to pay for renal dialysis, which could really be done in our hospitals. So my leader will speak about that as well. As Dr. Bodo said, we have no cath lab in the southwest regional health authority and heart disease is the number one cause of death in Trinidad and Tobago with 106 deaths per 100,000 persons. And Leader will speak about some plans that we have with regards to cardiac disease in Trinidad and Tobago. And Dr. Rupnerain spoke about preventative measures as well as Professor Daisley. And, you know, childhood obesity is one of the major preventative measures that we can do here in Trinidad and Tobago. Trinidad and Tobago has a 15% incidence of diabetes, but the global average is 10%. And what we are missing here in Trinidad is policy-driven directives. And we are not seeing that from the Minister of Health. Just recently, CARICOM voted on something called the octagonal warning label system in which almost every food item would have a warning label pasted on it. So we would know foods with high sodium, high fat, high sugar. And many CARICOM countries, including Antigone, Barbuda, Barbados, Dominica, St. Lucia, Bahamas, Suriname, they signed on to this program. You know which country abstained? Trinidad and Tobago. Trinidad and Tobago, we abstained from the food labeling program. So that is something we can look at as well, Leader, that's a preventative measure. The UK has, in fact, imposed a levy on very high sugary drinks where you have to pay a higher tax on these drinks. And that has reduced the consumption of many of these drinks and in fact made manufacturers of these drinks change the composition of their products. And my leader will also speak about that as well. With regards to the Children's Life Fund, Leader, which was your initiative, and let's give a round of applause for that. What we are seeing under this, right, what we are seeing under this present administration is that they are using a very narrow interpretation of the law, of the legislation in order to restrict access of the Children's Life Fund to many, many sick and severely sick children. So persons with beta-talosemia major and many blood disorders that are not necessarily deemed to be deadly are being refused treatment. We have cases such as Shannon Luke, Terrence Chadu and Jovi Mitchell in the past. And they were not able to access the fund and had to revert back to barbecues and GoFundMe campaigns, Leader. So that is something as well you will look at in your next term as Prime Minister.
The goodly doctors have raised a lot of issues and I'll try as quickly as I can to suggest some remedies, we may have some solutions that we have that we would want to implement. I want to start first with the NCDs that Professor Daisley began. And that report I mentioned to you that I received today in the parliament, it's called the Public Administration and Appropriations Committee, an examination into the adequacy of pharmaceutical and non-pharmaceutical and other supplies by the Ministry of Health. And one part of it deals with the whole Chronic Disease Assistance Program, which we commonly call CEDAP. This is where you get a free healthcare initiative. Patients get free, as I say, medical services, prescription drugs, pharmaceutical items to combat the NCDs. At a hearing this Joint Committee held, and this is at page 15 of the report, you would have seen me skimming through it, I was able to skim very quickly whilst we were sitting in the parliament. So I just bring a few of the points to your attention tonight as they relate, well, first of all, to the NCDs. And what it tells us, there are 526 pharmacies in our country. 231 participate in CEDAP, so out of that 526, you can go to these 231 to get your free prescription medication. Out of that 231 participating CEDAP pharmacies, there is only one in Tobago. Today, we passed a bill that the government, it was a Mama Guy bill. They were attempting to say they're giving self-government, self-determination to the people of Tobago. And their trolls are now out there with the narrative that the UNC blocked the bill. And we blocked it for good reason because far from giving self-determination, what it was doing was reserving the power to the Prime Minister of the country to say, to do, to make the decisions, and I'll come back to that. So when you want to tell me that we blocked Tobago, why is it that since 2015, there's only one CEDAP pharmacy, one pharmacy, one CEDAP pharmacy since 2015? Why was nothing done about it? The Tobago population? The Tobago population is large enough, no CEDAP pharmacies have been added, and this is something I'm calling out the government on, this is what the report is showing to us. But it goes a little further than that. With respect to only one pharmacy in Tobago and the two, two-something in Trinidad, the monitoring process, what this report tells us on page sixteen, there are only three individuals assigned to monitor all of the CEDAP-approved pharmacies, three persons. We talk about shortage, you talk about mental health staff shortage, nursing shortages, three persons to monitor, what did I tell you, two hundred and something, two thirty-one CEDAP pharmacies. Is it, is there a reason why the Prime Minister would tell our country Trinidad and Tobago has the best healthcare system in the world, and next day jumps on a plane and goes where? To California. But the rest of you who stay here, suffering, cannot access that. Well, on the CEDAP, I can say more, and Doc, when we read this further, because we just got it today, we can say some more. But there's another very disturbing matter going on with the supply by the Ministry of Health to the RHAs, and with the CEDAP medicines to the pharmacies, very serious concern, that there appears to be a cartel. You know what a cartel is? There appears to be a cartel of suppliers who supply the medications to the RHAs, to the hospitals and so on, to the, I wouldn't call their names tonight, okay? But there's a, appears to be a cartel that the large companies are the ones who are doing the supplies, and that is something that needs serious investigation. This report tells us that you have something called the Fair Trading, Trinidad and Tobago Fair Trading Commission. At a last stronghold where we had a tenured Lord Devish Mirage, and we had a tenured Lord Saddam, and a tenured Lord Jagali Singh, Jagali raised this issue of a cartel for the supply of medical supplies, medical equipment and pharmaceuticals and so on. And in this report, he talked about the remit of the Fair Trading Commission, which is a statutory agency under the Public Accounts Committee. And this committee, when you look at the financial statements for twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen, the committee learned that the fair trading job done by this commission, their mandate was to carry out investigations into possible anti-competitive practices on its own initiative, or at the request of any interested person pursuant to section five of the Fair Trading Act. I saw another report being laid today, I was just able to look at the name of it, and it is a report from the Fair Trading Commission. I flicked the pages, I got it on my, my system today, didn't have the time to read it properly, but the best of my memory from the flicking through, universe browsing through, the Fair Trading Commission is not doing its job, because there is this cartel supplying the medications to our country. And that is a very, very serious issue. And the recommendation from this report is that the Ministry of Health should request that the Fair Trading Commission undertake a comprehensive national study on medicine prices in accordance with the Fair Trading Act, and they must provide an update to Parliament by February tenth, twenty twenty-five. Let's keep a note of that, please, Doctor. They will have to provide it, and they should further provide a status update to Parliament on the review and the expected finalisation of the national medicine policy by February tenth, twenty-five. Now, this has been wrong for a while, and they, they are not reporting, the Ministry of Health is not reporting, and seems to be escaping, but we are reading up these reports, and we will be dealing with them. So that is with respect to the medications and so on, medical supplies. We talked about obesity, and I have already said it, and I will repeat it tonight, exactly what Dr. Rishi is telling us, that we will, we will do labelling that will alert parents, adults and so on, of the sugar content contained within packages of things, we will do it. The cath lab that you spoke of, Dr. Bodo remembers, there is no cath lab in San Fernando, so if you live in San Fernando, and you get your chest pain, you're in trouble. When you say crap, we'll smoke your bag, more than that, Rob, boy. No cath lab, we must build a cath lab for the South West, we must build one, have it operationalised. When it goes further, this Mama Guy of Tobago that took place in the Parliament today, because they had no intention of passing, they knew we were not supporting it, we knew the people of Tobago were not supporting those bills, and they had made it very clear they could not support them, but it reminds us, this is an election gimmick. You remember, just before election, local government, what happened? They came with Local Government Reform Act. Up to today, only one clause was proclaimed, and you know which one that was? To extend the life of the local government councils, and what that meant is to delay the election, where we took them to court. We have good doctors in the UNC, we have good lawyers in the UNC as well, and the court struck it down, and they had to call that election. So this, I'm saying, with the one, the one cath lab in San Fernando, we will do, but I promise you this, should you put us back, we will also fix back the cath lab in Tobago. Dr. Bodo told you that under my watch, our watch, we had an operationalising, operating cath lab. Since these fellows come into government, what has happened? Cath lab gone. So Tobago, Tobago is even worse than Trinidad from South West, because they had to fly over, they had to cross the sea. Again, we repeat the policy that Dr. Bodo mentioned, ninety minutes from coming to the door to stand, ninety minutes, that should be your waiting time, it shouldn't be hours, you'll be dead by then, ninety minutes from into the door, that's what you told me, and we can do it to stand, but you have to have the cath lab, you must have the cath lab. Okay, so those are some points there, the obesity, we talk about the NCDs, and all these newborn babies dying at that Port of Spain General Hospital. If it's one thing we should regret, newborn babies dying in the hospital, one thing we should never forgive ourselves for, is that we did not open that Kuva Children's Hospital, because that hospital is fully equipped, not just for the newborn babies, but also for the mothers' maternity care. That hospital was for the mothers who went into labour having their babies, it was also for the newborns, and it was also for, it had a burns unit, you know what that is? So that when point leases, which were so close, you get damage upon a point leases estate, you didn't have far to go. So I think it's just spite, malice and ill will that has prevented them from opening it. I repeat again, we will open that hospital. And my final point has to do with, you mentioned the Children's Life Fund. I will never forget that we had a child with one of the diseases, I think you mentioned, Dr. Rishi mentioned, that is not included now in the schedule for the Children's Life Fund Act. Now, the way law works, and I'm very proud to repeat, that was my Cabinet Note number one of twenty ten, it's the first Cabinet Note I took to our government then. And law is like this, so we passed it in twenty ten, we are fourteen years later, the law has to keep, be upgraded. And so we had this child, I remember MB Barry, and I worked with it, with the child and the family, and the Children's Life Fund board, not under my watch, this is now under the present government, that board sent to the then Attorney General for advice on whether child X should be given the Children's Life Fund. You know, the child died, that child died, because the Attorney General didn't have time to give that opinion, didn't have the time to provide a board with that opinion. And so there's some diseases, there's some medical problems that if you did not include it, I'm saying we will amend the Children's Life Fund Act to modernise it, bring it up to date. Further, as we are talking, well, from this report again, the other issue has to do with, look, we have so many doctors here, Dr. Anna, Dr. Krishna is here, Dr. Tim is here, well, I'm not a doctor, last week you don't have lawyers on this stage, but I'm a doctor's wife, so I could learn a little from him. This is it. The list of medications, doctors, all of you, when was that list ever updated? Not to my knowledge, I don't ever recall that ever being updated. So we have all these outdated medications, when today, with the technology we have, there's so many more new, new medications that can be utilised for treatments to patients. So we also have to look at that, review it, Doctor, Professor, we have to review that and update it to get the more modern medications, which have less side effects and all the negative things that may be associated. So I think those are the points that I wrote down based on what you all spoke about. I thank you very much, and Dr. Bodo, we'll check out this report further. Back to you, Dr. Rishi.
Thank you. So let's give all panelists a round of applause for round three. And moving on to round four, topic number four, fixing the public health system, addressing the quality of healthcare in terms of diagnosis, treatment, medication, CEDAP, as leader spoke about, backlogs, equipment, training, personnel, hospital administration, culture and attitude change towards healthy lifestyles. So it overlaps a bit with what we spoke about previously, but I'll start again with Professor Daisley.
I would try to be as practical as possible. One of the things that I witness as a citizen is the crowding in the accidental emergency department, and there, there need to be a solution. Some patient would be there waiting for, for treatment for hours, hours, sometimes for days before they are seen. So something has to be done, so that patients who visit the accidental emergency department be seen promptly, you know, and sent on their way, either be admitted or discharged. The other thing that, concerning the accident and emergency department, is that the accidents and emergency department of a hospital should be the showpiece of that hospital. And I remember in Mona, that institution, accident and emergency department, were run by the very senior medics. You cannot really, I mean, being a doctor, you go through various phases and stages. You just graduate, and then you get the experience as you go along. But I think that that department needs to be manned by people with a lot of experience. In so doing, then you would have rapid diagnosis, or quick diagnosis, and quick therapy being instituted, rather than having the majority of that department being run by young graduates, you know. That's a problem, and I, I see that has to be dealt with, you know, you cannot have all these patients waiting for hours to be seen in the accident and emergency department. As I said before, diabetes and hypertension, they have vascular problem, and you're going to get your heart attack with both of them. And why is it then that the tools that are needed to make the diagnosis and treat the patient, you know, are being refused? Why is it that we don't have the, the cath lab? And this is the very first point that I made. In the good old days, the Medical Chief of Staff was responsible for what went on in the hospital, and he or she had the, the pulse, the hand on the pulse, and they would deal with the thing. But the present system has to go through a lot of bureaucracy, you know, before the, 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 the tools of the trade are met. And this, this not only happens with the cath, the cath lab. The new modalities of imaging like the CT scan and the MRI, a lot of it is doled out to the private institutions. What is happening here? Why is this continuing, you know? Who suffers is the public that suffer, you know, and they should not be suffering with the public, you know, they come to us for care, and yet still, we say that we cannot administer the care, go to the private institution and pay a lot of money for that sort of thing. Now, if it is money is the problem, then do like what the Jamaicans have done, and what the Jamaicans did where money was concerned, was that you pay as you earn as a patient. So the person who was working for one dollar probably might be charged twenty cents, but the person who was working for ten dollars might be charged fifty cents. So you pay as you earn, you contribute something towards the coffers, if money is the problem. But something has to be done, and I am seeing this sort of trend where, at the slightest moment, patients are asked, who could ill afford go to the private sector to get your CT scan, to get your MRI, to get your lab test? I mean, it's ridiculous, it's either you run in a public system where you claim that it is free service, or end the free service by instituting some measure of, of, of funding, you know. And the last thing I wanted to say is that, training, 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 we need to be conscious and, and, you know, get our acts together, to start our training within our institution, rather than running up to the UA, USC and the UK. We could do it here, we have all the resources, and we can do that sort of thing here.
Fixing the public health system is certainly not a trivial and simple endeavour. Healthcare is a truly bottomless pit. Since we do not have infinite resources, and we are not blessed with ongoing revenue streams that are going to pay dividends in the near future, we must make sound and rational and informed decisions. We must obtain the best bang for our buck. This can only be achieved with the proper monitoring and evaluation, as we've said here before tonight, and the constant review of smart targets, specific, measurable, attainable, reliable and time-bound, which are applicable to all of our health programmes. Therefore, a special unit must be tasked with this important responsibility, to have oversight of programmes, to ensure that target outputs are achieved, and this would lead to relevant positive health outcomes. As we, as we've said before tonight, taking obesity as, as an example, if we take obesity prevalence as a measure of a school nutrition and educational programme, if we lead to a significant decrease in, in this statistic by using certain strategies as compared to others, then these specific measures that bring value could be replicated, leading to an overall significant cost-saving, and as we know it in health economics, we know that as opportunity cost. When considering certain medicines, and the leader of the opposition would have said this, and the non-expansion of CEDAP to incorporate some of the newer anti-hypertensives, the only one of recent nature that would have been added to the CEDAP would be Amlodopine, like the ARBs, however, one of the newer medicines, anti-hypertensive, those are angiotensin receptor blockers, and modern oral hypoglycemic, such as the SGLT2 inhibitors, the concept of penny wise and pound foolish comes to mind. If we obtain better glucose and blood pressure levels, which we would ensure which we would ensure that our organs' functional reserves are preserved longer so that we do not have to develop early kidney or even heart failure, which is much more expensive for our public health systems to cope it. And Rishi would have given you the figures for that with dialysis that the governments would have spent in the last few years. Healthcare delivery is largely dependent not only on the essential human resources but also the proper tools, equipment and medicines. How often do we hear about a surgery being postponed due to lack of one or several of these factors? I suspect many times as patients recount these experiences almost daily. There must be accountability for this. Equipment should be updated regularly as well as there must be a proper training and retraining as Dr. Daisley would have mentioned before. There must be a schedule for staff to deal with the changing nature of modern medicine, not only as it deals with the operation and maintenance of equipment but on their own knowledge base as well. We should have continuous medical education. Our public healthcare staff should be incentivized to undergo further specialization and be properly remunerated for their hard work. All healthcare personnel should enjoy a standard of living that is applicable to their dedication, sacrifice and risk. All of us in this nation have a role and responsibility when it comes to our health. The public authorities have to be more proactive and less reactive by fostering healthier lifestyles with the help of all relevant stakeholders, including the community, school and faith-based organizations as well as sporting groups by properly managed monetary and technical support to encourage and attain our targeted health parameters at all levels of society. Thank you.
I just want to start this final session by first of all pausing for a moment to reflect upon the fact that this country is blessed with some of the best doctors and nurses. They're hardworking, but with all systems you require the support. And I think this is where the system is falling down because of the lack of support. I often look at the health model leader in terms of the three Ps. The plant, which of course is the infrastructure which you spoke about, we have enough of that if we maintain it. The people who are the workers in the system, doctors, nurses, all the healthcare workers and of course the process. And I think this is where the process falls down. I just want to piggyback on some of the points raised by my two colleagues here. The issue of overcrowding in the accident and emergency at San Fernando has been dealt with already, it can be dealt with again. I'm trusting that my friend, Dr. Chattergun, during the open session will reflect and share what was done at San Fernando Hospital to deal with that. So that, there's a solution for that. With regards to the CAT lab, I just want to put on the record that in your time leader, the tender was actually sent out for the CAT lab in 2015, but of course the government changed. So the space was identified, the space is still there and this government has re-tended this, you know, so many times. But also to note that with regards to the outsourcing, not only for the renal patients but for cardiac patients, they've spent $153 million in the last nine years to outsource cardiac procedures. That could have built three CAT labs. So this is the issue. Now Professor Daisley mentioned about the fact that you don't have supplies and so on and you have to send patients to private labs to do tests. Something is wrong. We are spending over 700 to 800 million dollars a year on what we call pharmaceuticals and non-pharmaceuticals. That's also reflected in that report that came out in the Joint Select Committee today. And really the question has to be, what is the problem? Is it a problem of short supply? Or is it, you know, a stock-out problem? Is it efficiency and so on? So that needs to be looked at. The parallel healthcare system was a hoax. This thing of a parallel healthcare system fooled the population. We were left with a disease burden that is now there to be dealt with and we have to deal with that in a very definitive way. The part of the problem with the chronic disease clinics, and Dr. Ruben Ryan will attest to this, is that the clinics are understaffed. In this day and age, patients not only need a prescription written for their diabetic and antihypertensive medication, they also need to be counseled. And the doctors are so busy, you have sometimes one or two doctors having to treat 100 patients. So all it can do really is to write a prescription. Now, this is ironical because you have 300 and 400 new doctors coming out every year who can fill these positions. So we need to deal with that. So the solution is there. Now, in terms of the prevention aspect, we have, we have to go back to extending the opening hours of the health center. That proved to be a very useful measure and it can be a preventative measure. You have to make it convenient for the patients, you know. Why is it that you can't have the health centers open again till eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night and on weekends and Saturday? That is when it is convenient and also you take the healthcare to where it's convenient for patients if you're looking at preventive care. The other point I want to make is that machines were built to work. MRI machine and CT machine thoroughly need a resting night, them designed to work 24/7. So all of this backlog you have Tim, why it is you can't employ more technicians, pay them overtime, whatever it takes, and you cut the backlog. So instead of a patient and then waiting for six months to get a CT, that could be done at night. There is nothing that says that you cannot do a CT and an MRI 12 o'clock at night with due to emergencies. So you can do elective work using the machines. That's what they are built for. So we have to think outside of the box. We have to think outside of the box and we have to get innovative leader. But this all comes down to one thing. It comes down to leadership and management. It comes down to making sure that we fix the process. And, you know, it's hard to say, but I am not sure that this government is capable of doing that anymore. And really and truly it requires a different vision. It requires a new leadership. It requires leadership. Leadership with a will and a vision to execute and to do what is needed. I know, I can say a whole lot more here. I just want to close on one more point. Quite often the Minister of Health will come to the parliament and they are asked to go to the papers by, you alluded to one CEO who might be in the wrong profession. So they advertise that they are doing 1,000 tests, they are doing 5,000 tests. But they don't tell you how many tests they're not doing. It is not about the number of tests you do. It is about the number that is required and how many of that you are doing. And it is also about timely healthcare. There's this thing about you getting healthcare for free. Of course, it's for free at the point of delivery. But if you have to wait six months for it and you die in the process, it is of no benefit to you. So the whole issue of timely healthcare is something that needs to be addressed. And of course you started the external patient program which look to address that. And I'm sure that when you come back as Prime Minister, you'll be able to do that again. I, I, I will leave it there leader. I have a lot more I could say. I'll leave it there because I know we want to hear from our audience as well. Thank you very much.
Leader, with your permission, we'd like now to open up the floor for the audience. Post questions to anyone on the panel. Thank you. If you could just make your way to the mic and state your name. Make your way to the mic and state your name and could give your contribution. We are, we are asking for persons to contribute. So we last than two minutes, please.
A pleasant good evening. Karen Nanku from County Central to Professor Daisley. You had mentioned in 1979, when you entered the system as an intern and then in 1994, it was changed into the RHAs. Can you tell us what the then government say with regard to the rationale for the change?
I thought that they were just following the British system, the British system of the RHAs. Britain, by is a vast country and you could understand why they had regions. Trinidad and Tobago is a small country. I don't see the reason, you know, you get from a Rima to Port of Spain, well, not now. You know, in an hour, let us say. And I can't see the reason why you have divided up the country, this such a small country into RHAs. That was something for the larger country like Britain. But we wanted to follow Britain in all aspects. But I think that that is suited for Britain. I don't think that it is all that suited for Trinidad and Tobago. And I think that it needs to be reviewed. As I said before, the system that was in existence then where the medical chief of staff, he or she had their pulse, their hands in the fire and they knew what was needed. And he would recognize or she would recognize that more and more people were dying from diabetes or from heart disease. And he would listen to his colleagues on the ward, listen to his colleagues and institute the measures. If there need to be a CAT lab, a CAT lab was forthcoming, you know. But to get a CAT lab now, it has to go through all this process and the funding and the reasoning. And the reason should be straightforward, be needed because patients need it. End of story. If you can't get the funds, then get it from somewhere. I don't know where you're going to get it from. But it is needed. It's a tool that is very much needed in our society because many of our patients are dying from heart disease, from heart attack. And that is because of the coronary arteries being blocked up. And you need the CAT lab. You need that. And as my friend here said, 90 minutes, you come in and you get your stent in. Why should we as Trinidadians be denied that? Why? Are we inferior to the rest of the people in the world? Are we not citizens, a human being? That is the current way, you know, medicine advances. Once upon a time, you would listen with a stethoscope and that kind of thing. Now you have all these invasive procedures which are very simple, you know, and so there is need for the CAT lab. You know, we should not be begging and imploring and year after year. That's yeah, it's madness.
Good afternoon, political leader, MPs. I am standing here and I am very emotional. I was trying to keep it together here because my mom passed away in 2020. And these are real examples I'm going to call out here now. And through me, I'm hoping to get justice for my mom. And I'm hoping at some point the boss lady, when she comes back as Prime Minister, she will put some of these things into policy. So boss, my mom was diagnosed with stage III C ovarian cancer in 2008. And she needed to do emergency surgery to remove the ovary and part of the intestine that had spread to outside. Dr. Sechan spoke about the cancer in the last segment and also Dr. Bodo spoke about timely treatment. The longer you wait with cancer, the more it spreads and the less likely you could survive it. So she had to do emergency surgery. And that is a specialized surgery because the ovaries have something called lymph nodes connected to it. So you need surgeons, specialized surgeons who know what they're doing. Reason why I'm saying that that surgery, she couldn't get the surgery done in public in time. And we had to, we were forced to do it in private. And the surgery was costing $60,000. We were able to raise the money through family, through, there's something in our religion called Zakat and we applied and we got through. And guess what? We did the surgery, but then now the medication to do the chemotherapy right after. Because as you get rid of the cancer, you wait about a month and then you have to do chemotherapy to kill out all these stray cancer cells that were to be spreading. And the hospital, the public system did not have the required medication, the chemotherapy to treat with her. And we were forced to go back into private again. $12,000 per chemotherapy session and she had to do six. So it's six by 12, $72,000, right? The reason why I'm saying this is because it's very hard for poor people. If you don't have that money, you're forced to stay in the system and the cancer will spread and you die basically. Basically, it's a catch-22 situation. So we were fortunate because we were able to raise the funds and the doctors gave her 40% chance to survive beyond five years. She survived 12 years. She survived 12 years. So based on, based on that situation, I would like to suggest two things. First of all, in this new government coming into play here, let us finish the oncology center once and for all. Because had there been a national oncology center functioning, that would have been able to save thousands of lives. But it is, is a elephant shuck there in Mount Opekong, getting vine, getting rust iron, all kind of thing happening there. And administrations pass and we can't seem to finish the national oncology center. So I'm making a plea on behalf of all cancer patients to get that going, please. That's number one. And number two, in America, there's something called Affordable Care Act, ACA. Some people call it the Obama Care. If we could consider in moving forward into a developed nation status to put some sort of medical coverage for poor people and middle income people where you're being given the option, where you be given the option, if they don't have it in the public, you have some sort of medical coverage, you could get it done in private. Right? It is called the Affordable Care Act, boss. I hope you could consider it. And look at the logistics, the maths behind it. And if you could afford it, let me go through with it, please. Thanks. And then, and then the last point. The last point I would like to state is this, my mom passed away in 2020. The cancer came back after 12 years, but it attacked her breasts, her right breast. And she needed to do emergency surgery again to remove the right breast. We were able to raise the funds again through the same system we did in 2008. We went in a private nursing home. Unfortunately, she died in the nursing home. And she didn't die because of the surgery itself. The surgeon removed the breast properly. But there was a minor thing he needed to do with her liver, which was to do a biopsy. He pushed the needle in too far and it passed the liver and punctured her intestines in three areas. And the perforation is what killed her because she got infection. So my third point, I am fighting for justice for my mom here. Medical negligence is something big outside and poor people are suffering because there is no recourse for justice. And if we could put, if we could put a proper system in place to look at the law for medical malpractice, medical negligence, for justice for the poor people. We tried to get peer review on the situation and no surgeon wants to give an independent report of what went on in Trinidad. We are forced to go foreign to get a doctor to try to come down to review the case. And that's where we are right now. So our medical negligence procedure processes is almost non-existent and we need to put some improvements, please. Thank you very much. God bless.
Fras, on the issue of the on the issue, one moment please. Safras, on the issue of the National Oncology Center, we have committed that we will complete the National Oncology Center. I have spoken before about other, other plans, but let's hear some others. But with respect to the insurance issues, we're also addressing that. So thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good night. My name is Seokabonapad. My little experience with the healthcare system, I had a baby in July 2024 this year. And when I went to the hospital, it took me two and a half days to get a bed. So I continued walking all over the hospital for two and a half days with no rest. Right? After seeking medical, medical, I came home, the medication, it very hard to get, very, very hard. All the medications that put me on, I couldn't, I can't breastfeed with the medications, but it very hard to get. Sometimes you go to the hospital, they tell you come back in a week time, you go back in a week time, it's the same thing. All right? That is my little intake on it. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Missasa, it is very nice to be here and very nice to actually be in your presence. Distinguished panel, thank you very much for the invitation that has been extended to me to come and present some insights as to the issues and problems with the health sector. Dr. Bodo, I'm the individual you messaged today, today. I am also a I am also a pharmacist by profession and the president of the Private Pharmacy Business Association. I am in charge of the five hundred pharmacies, Mrs. Bissasa, in this country. So I'm very equipped and well-prepared to give you insights as to what is really going on here. The panel has touched on a lot of things that are very interesting and very disturbing. Professor Daisley, one of the important things that you forgot to mention with mental health, currently, there is a significant shortage of most of the drugs treating mental health. No cogentin, no Tri-X, no haloperidol, practically nothing. Even Ciroquel, nonexistent. Daily, people are coming, so it exacerbates the situation with all these patients who are suffering tremendously. Doctor Sitaran, Naveen and Valmekir are very good friends of mine. I want to get down into a bit of the things that were to be discussed today. Mrs. Bissasa, the joint select committee meeting was started for today, which I was supposed to be part of. And as far as I understand, it did not come off. It has been postponed. So the report has not really been presented as yet. Yet to be decided the date for that joint select committee meeting. The monopoly that is existing in this country right now is disgusting. There is a particular company controlled by a particular group of individuals where pharmaceutical prices are being controlled, inflated, exorbitant prices, and we have nothing else or no options because they control everything, including a chain of super pharmacies nationwide. I have been clamoring, Mr. Maraj Devish, I am the person, Sanjay Mohammy, we have the secretary of the pharmacy board here present with us also. I have been fighting with Mr. Maraj from the attorneys and I am the person who brought all this delight to the Fair Trade Commission. And we currently have a matter engaging the Fair Trade Commission and unfair practices, the monopoly that exists and everything that is going on really. It, it, it ridiculous and we have to put a stop to it. Unfair practice of monopoly, the law states you cannot control more than forty percent. They are controlling seventy-five percent. The foreign exchange, over three hundred million annually are going to this major company, unbridled, unchecked. When the smaller companies and medium companies approach the bank for foreign exchange, they are asked to take a loan for three to five years to get one million US, take a loan for seven million TT and you will be able to get the thing. So the bank benefit that biting into the profit of the company. So they automatically forced to close down, scale down. There's a significant problem of the shortage of drugs. If you are constipated right now, you cannot get a Dolcolax. If you get tear forcing and you go to the hospital, you cannot even get sometimes anesthetic to do surgery. It is terrible, very, very bad. So on the, I don't want it overstayed or overtalked, but I, I need to say these things. So we talk about the monopoly, the companies, price control, fair trade breaches and the significant drug shortages. The foreign exchange problem is not benefiting the small and medium companies, but designed to facilitate the large companies or that has just thirty-one percent. They're forced to take the loans, as I said. The other situation currently going on with the chemistry, food and drug division is the registration of pharmaceuticals. As you would be aware, last year for a three-month period, there were several raids throughout the country called Operation Windsor, which was used to seize many drugs that were deemed to be counterfeit, illegal and not fit to be used. All of those same drugs, for example, emergency was fit to be used during COVID to save people lives, but not fit to be used after that, primarily because they wanted to take this off the market so that another product that that company can increase monthly sales by six million dollars. And this is terrible, right? So we have registration delays from food and drugs. They tell you normally three months, ninety days, you can register a new drug. There have been four legal notices submitted and signed off by the minister for this year. Out of the hundred and sixty-seven products that has been registered in this country, a hundred and seventeen has been for one particular company. So if you are trying to get something registered, to bring options or alternatives to patients, you cannot get it registered because it will be a competitive product to these other big companies that carrying up their prices to increase their profit margins. And it, it can't look like that, it have to stop. We have another situation currently going on now, advertising of third scheduled drugs, for example, the, the metformin, the drugs that you would normally use for hypertension, diabetes, Parkinson's, whatever. These all carry under the chemistry, food and drug laws and the pharmacy board act that it is illegal to advertise. This bank, particular company has gone on Google Play Store and put up an online app advertising all these products with coupon discounts for every patient in this country to see and able to take that coupon and go to those super pharmacies only and purchase. Unfair trading, fair trade, and as you rightly said, the Fair Trade Commission not doing their work. So we move on again. We spoke about the unfair trade practices, right? Nepdek, in twenty fifteen, when you left office, Mrs. Bissasa...
Mr. Sushit, um, just sorry to interrupt, but if you could just sum it up in a, in a, in a conclusion, because we want, want other persons to contribute as well. Sorry about that, thank you.
Well, according to what you see that, when, when governments change, everything was dropped. We provide our service, the hundred and three health centers, we have taken the brunt of the work, the pharmacies, the two hundred and sixty pharmacies have taken the brunt of the work of the national healthcare system through the, the health centers. And we do see that provide, but they have dropped our costs from fifteen dollars to eight dollars without any increase and we still having difficulties. Yes, only special import permits are only granted to certain people to bring in medications. As the gentleman was saying, he needed a drug. If you don't have it here, you cannot even have it specially imported. We need to update all the old laws, all the antiquated laws from nineteen sixty-two regarding pharmacy. And we need a complete overhaul of customs to stop the illegal importation of pharmaceuticals and all other things that affect in the, the country. I could go on and on, but I'll, I'll call it here.
Thank you very much, thank you.
My dearest Kamla and other members of your esteemed panel, I am Dr. Arund Chaturgun. And I have been a doctor in this country since nineteen eighty-one for many years. In those many years, I have worked with many ministers of health. And there's no doubt in my mind that Terrance Dialling is the worst of all the ministers of health. I don't know if it's because of the number of years that he has been there. Because if, if my memory serves me right, he has been the longest-serving minister of health in this country. He's been there for nine years. But you know what? In those nine years, he never got it right. But the problem didn't only start with him. The problem started with a prime minister who did not recognize that Terrance Dialling was the wrong man. He was the wrong man for the minister of health. And so you've got a minister of health there who was the wrong man to start with. In addition, he now appoints members to boards of the RHAs who are misfits and who should not even be there. So the problem, the problem goes on and on. And ladies and gentlemen, most if not all of you would have had terrible experiences at the nation's public hospitals. And you're going to continue having bad experiences there until you move the prime minister and the minister of health. It's not, I'm sorry to tell you, it's not going to get better. And you should not put pressure on the lovely Kamla Pasar Bissasa and expect her to do miracles. You have to play your part also in ensuring that this prime minister is not there because he is the one who has put Terrance Dialling as the minister of health. And you've got to make sure that Terrance Dialling is gone. Only then, only then will the slate be written clean for Kamla to do what she, what she can do, in fact, what she has done. Let me tell you what she did in twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen, fourteen. What we did, with Kamla Pasar Bissasa as the prime minister, Fuad Khan, Fuad Khan is a minister of health, he was a good minister of health. Lakram Bodo as the chairman of the SWRHA and Arund Chaturgun as the medical director, we decided, you know what mattered? It was the patients that mattered. And we said, we said to you, oh, patients, you need to be able to call somebody when you experience any problem in the hospital, whether it's in the emergency department, whether it's in the clinics, you can't get a clinic, you have to wait months and months and sometimes years to even get an appointment. And we decided we were going to break into the system and put a number on the walls of the hospital that patients can call when they were having problems. We put the numbers in the emergency department, we put it in the clinics. It was the number of the medical director, Arund Chaturgun. And I'm going to give you his number, I'm going to give you his number so that when you are having problems in the nation's public hospitals, you can call him, seven seven three seven eight three eight. Keep that number. Because as long as Dialling is there, you are going to continue having problems in the nation's public hospitals. He cannot get it right. He has not been able to get it right for nine years. He's not going to get it right again. I want to say one more thing before I leave. You know, in twenty, in twenty sixteen, I had a meeting with the flashy flamboyant Faris Al Rawi. I am from San Fernando West. Faris Al Rawi is my MP, right, Anil? I met Faris Al Rawi, I, I met Faris Al Rawi with the CEO then, Mr. Anil Gosain, in the office of the CEO at the SWRHA. Faris Al Rawi promised us that if we ever had problems in the hospital, he would help us. Because he was the MP for San Fernando West and the hospital came under the umbrella of the San Fernando West. Well, he never helped us. He lied, he lied to us. He never helped us. Whenever you, we called him or text him or emailed him, he would never answer. "Come to my office," he said on Independence Avenue, and we did. But it was of no use. He never helped us. Well, I want to tell Faris Al Rawi, don't come back by we in San Fernando West, now boy. The star is shining on Michael Dowlat. The same star that shone on the little baby in the manger, that star is shining on Michael Dowlat. Bye-bye, Faris, don't come back by we in San Fernando West. Don't come back by we. In San Fernando West, we have Hindus, Christians, Muslims, Saibaba devotees, and all will be praying to the Lord for you to go your merry way. We don't want to. Ladies and gentlemen, as I leave you, you have to play your part and you have to get rid of this minister of health. Only then can Kamla do what she has promised to do, to reform the health sector for all of us.
Thank you very much, Dr. Chaturgun. And I'd like to reinforce that we are in the final days of Terrance Dialling as a member of parliament for St. Joseph. And Dr. Chaturgun, it has been said, Faris only reads love letters, so that is a problem. He only reads love letters, so that's why you never got through to him. We'll only have three more speakers from the audience leader and next we will have Anil Maraj.
Yes, good evening, good evening to the, to the panel, very, very, I just want to give a, this is, this is actually give kudos to what is being done here. There, there's no other forum like this and I want to commend the leader of the opposition for having this and also the learned doctors. Now, my contribution here is going to be very brief and I just want to get a level of guarantee. I've been in contact a lot with, with Dr. Sitaran and also with Dr. Bodo. And I've talked verbatim about the whole issue of legislation as it comes to the issue of registering of drugs in Trinidad and Tobago. This is, what I have in my hand is a copy of what are the, the requirements. And I think we have some of the most, the longest set of requirements to register drugs, simple drugs, eh? I'm not even talking about, you know, I'm not even talking about biologics, I'm not even talking about cancer drugs, but OTC drugs, vitamin supplements and the same level of requirements that they want for those advanced third scheduled drugs is what we get. So I am hoping that we get an assurance that we look at legislation of the Chemistry Food and Drug Act, of the Medical Board Act and of the Pharmacy Board Act for which I belong to. My own is going to be very brief tonight because we have had some great contributions here, so I thank you all.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, good night, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Willan Gindu. I, since nineteen ninety-one, I was waiting for operation on my foot and I couldn't get it because I know a friend who, his wife is a doctor and she get me the operation and I get it in six months' time. And I was waiting thirty-three years for the operation and I couldn't get it, right? And the other thing is that my heart, right? I waiting for a heart, a, a test for a heart, I can't get it, right? I sent before the pandemic, it became around six years now, I still get it, right? And my, my mom died, right? Because she was waiting on a, on a, how to call it, a, a blood test, right? My brother died because he was waiting on a blood test. My father died because he was waiting on a blood test and he, they couldn't get it, right? And when they do, when, because my, my cousin was studying to be a doctor, she get it. And when she get it, they say he had us to get antibiotics drip. And when she went and she get it, he started talking stuff like that. Because it was too late, they couldn't do anything, you understand? And the medicine say he doing stuff, he's doing nothing. When you go into the hospital, all the sides of the wall and thing real dirty and they're doing nothing, all the toilets, everything. And then they go like, oh, that is why it going to have different diseases in the hospital because it's no good. I lean up on a wall, right? For three nights waiting to see the doctor for my heart. From a foot was the same thing, right? The, the, the tenant, the, who, who is pusher, throw me off the chair. I had to lie down on the floor, right? Lie down on the floor and, and, and be resting there until I get a, a bench to sit down, right? Three days after, then I come and I get a bed to go in. When I get the bed, then I have no sheets, then I have no pillow, I didn't have nothing. They even have a cup of water, nothing at all to give you, you understand? Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you very much, sir.
I would like you to become back the prime minister and fix this problem in this country, throughout Trinidad and Tobago, all the leaders, thank you.
Kamla Pasar Bissasa will fix it. And we will just have our last speaker from the audience now.
Honorable Opposition Leader, Ms. Kamla Pasar Bissasa, Senior Counsel, our panel, Members of Parliament, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Marlene Samru. I would like to make a contribution to let our opposition leader know, I have a son that is blind and what I went through from day one, he was given oxygen. is blind, and what I went through from day one, he was given oxygen at the Mong Home Hospital when he was born. Until this day, I have a lot of emotional problems facing society in different places with him. Going to, going to doctors, going to desk, going to anywhere you have to go, you have a lot of problems to face because of the fact no one did justice to this child. He is a big man now, he's forty-three years, until this day, from day one till now, no justice in the health system. He was given oxygen, he negligent, in fact, that was negligence. Until this day, I have to struggle anywhere with this child alone, no help whatsoever. A food card is a problem. To go to get disability for him was a problem. Anything you go to do, it is a problem. They don't have teachers training special ed so that this child could further his education. I run with him day and night, day and night, sleepless nights in the hospital, no help from nowhere. Flying Eye Hospital was in Trinidad in nineteen eighty-three. This mother had us to struggle with passage on her own to reach to the national airport, international airport, seek the doctor's assistance. I was turned down by the doctors from Trinidad. They told me I cannot see the foreigners' doctors, I have to be represented by the doctors from here. And as the doctor walked off, the foreigners saw me and welcomed me. Take this child, check him out, told me to visit the Port of Spain General Hospital on the evening, after four, they will seek his assistance. And the doctors there told me I cannot see them unless they sign the paper. Lo and behold, I was there until eleven o'clock in the night. No doctor saw this child, nobody want to represent this child. One of the foreigners' doctors called me inside and attended this child and told me his eyes could be corrected, but they will have to get the doctors here to sign the documents. Lo and behold, the doctors went back, no doctors here signed the application form. My child is totally blind till this day. So I would just like our next prime minister, Ms. Kamla Pasar Bissasa, to seek justice for parents like myself and for children who have these kind of problems. This is my contribution, I thank you.
Thank you very much. We, we know you well, we know your son. You bring him to every, every meeting, and we can see what can be done. So I keep telling him, I'm happy to see you, but then I have to touch him and let him know it's me. So tell him good night for me, and we see how we can help him, or we try our best. Good night, good night, son. Let me thank all of you here, all our panelists, a brilliant panel here tonight, very interesting comments and commentaries and facts, information. You have one more, I'm sorry, I thought, okay. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Good night, political leader, good night to the panel. My name is Dion Richards, and I'm from the Maruga community. And one of the challenges that we face in Maruga is ambulance pressures. The distance from Princess Town to Maruga because of the, the good roads that we have, quote unquote, it takes at best one hour, and that's if you could get the ambulance to respond. Most times, they don't ever respond, they take three hours, four hours, sometimes they don't ever come at all, and that is a serious health issue. Yes, we have another issue, and I'm trying to push this along real quick. Another issue is the health centers, so it closes at four PM in the afternoon, and it doesn't reopen until the following morning. And should something happens in the Maruga area, and, and there are communities like Marak, which is even further than an hour away from Princess Town, if something should happen in the, in the later hours in the night, and you get a vehicle to drop you down, it's quite Princess Town, sometimes San Fernando you have to go to, it's really hard. So the people of Maruga would want to know what would be you as the leader of the opposition and the prime minister in twenty twenty-five, what would be your position to rectify this issue for this community? In addition, I am on the ground in Maruga Tablean every day, and I know that the people of Maruga Tablean is standing with our good MP, Ms. Benjamin, she's standing with you as, they are standing with you as the political leader and the next prime minister of Trinidad and Tobago, and they are standing with UNC for twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, a bit first-hand the panelists, brilliant panelists here, Professor Daisley with us. And Prof, he told me that, he taught, you taught professor? Yes, at university, is that so? You can remember. Prof said you taught him. Can we give him a round of applause, Professor Daisley? Member of parliament, Faisal Bar, MP, Dr. Bodo, MP, Dr. Rishi, and our new young doctor here, thank you, Dr. Rupnurain, all of you for coming out and coming. With that, respect to Maruga Tablean, we had a problem when we came into office, and not just in Maruga Tablean, but it was the same issue, I think Dr. Bodo mentioned it. We kept the health centers open later hours and on weekends, and that is something we will certainly explore again. So with respect to your roads, where we have to move Rohan out, and move Rowley, and he will then have to remove Rohan, we deal with the roads. I do understand, I've come into your constituency many times, and those roads are really the worst, amongst the worst, I shouldn't say, because you have welcome road somewhere too. The roads have deteriorated so badly. I, I just said to Professor here, there's so, every sector is in a state of collapse. Every sector, health, education, everything, infrastructure, you name it. So it will take a miracle, and that miracle have to be, have to put back the UNC into office. May God continue to bless you all, and I thank you all very, very much. Thank you for being here.